Yes, yes. Okay. I don't see a light. Is there usually a light?
I have a pulse.
Do you have a pulse?
Yes.
Well.
I've gone live.
All right.
Well, you're more important than that.
Since Frank has a pulse, we will, at this point, do our pledges to the clients.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
When I'm somewhere where they don't do the Texas pledge, I kind of do it my way. Okay, at this point, can we do a roll call?
Commissioner Ignoschek.
Here.
Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Under announcements, I don't know if you've seen them, they're finally, one thing is today, they are finally patching the never-ending pool there in the corner of 2438 and Highway 90. Why'd they do it the day that it rains and it's full of water? And you can't tell. I'm not sure, maybe that helped make it rain? I'm not sure. So, there has, you know, as we, there's been a, now I've called multiple times and I know multiple people have, a water leak right there at the corner at the stop sign, and a continual pool of water. But apparently now they are at least trying to fix it. Other things, I don't know, and I tried to pull it up today and I cannot find the November 5th election results for Guadalupe County. They were online last week, however, the only thing that I bring up from that is that there were, oh gosh, and I was going to check the areas, there was probably five to 10 MUDs being voted on, municipal utility districts, all with one person and one vote voting yes, which is what a developer does. They put a, well, these are all over Guadalupe County. So they put a person in a trailer house, give them that residence.
Yeah.
There's one person in the district, they get the one vote, so it's 100% voting yes. And I was just, you know, you see that, but I was just amazed at the number of them. I bet it was close to 10 or more.
And do you know where they were?
No, I was gonna look that up and I, it is not currently online that I can find. It was last week, the early voting results, or the, it might have been, I think it was under early voting results, it was there, but it is not online right now. It has the May results, but I don't have them.
How does, I don't know, how does this work? I mean, is it like for the one lot or for a neighborhood?
No, it's for where they're gonna put a development.
Put a development.
Yeah, a district. And so it's municipal, municipal utility district.
Well, what kind of area can it cover?
Whatever lot they bought.
The lot they bought?
Well, I guess, or lots.
It's just their property?
I believe so, I believe so. But yeah, there was probably, and of course, they're gonna be all over the county, and we know there's one going down on 1150. There's a MUD that they applied.
And what's the municipal utility district?
They basically drilled well.
On my ballot, when I went to vote.
No, because you're not the one person in that district.
It's only one person.
They installed one person in that quote district, and so there's only one voter that can cast a vote.
And the district is normally that amount of property that they own as they're planning.
Right, that they've outlined as being in their quote district.
And what can they do, what do you do?
That's what they've always done.
What do you do with the municipal utility district?
It's, I believe it's mostly for water and sewage.
Yep. So they're gonna tax that one person to build their water?
Oh, no, that one person voted, so now it is a MUD. Now they can move the houses in or whatever.
Where's the water and sewage coming from then?
From those buildings that they're going to build, those, that they're gonna move in.
It's not our tax money building them?
No, but it's our water, they're gonna be drilling into it.
Right.
It's our aquifer.
Yeah. It's just kind of a, you know.
They get a loan, they get more of a loan, get a loan.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know that much about them. I just know that this was a tactic that I heard of, they were talking about it at the mayor's meeting, like last year before, and they, and I saw it with my own eyes when I went to that.
They're being the investment corporations, is that, is that, that this is their tactic to, in order to acquire?
In order to create the MUD. If they were doing one where there were already citizens, it may not go through, so they have an area where they install the one voter.
Yeah, and I'm just making sure that I understand who you mean "they" are, and that is the entity creating the MUD. Right, the investment.
The developers, whoever owns that.
Right, right.
Expansive property. I'm just curious what the benefit might be, because maybe I want one, and I have two votes. And I know my wife is voting way up.
I'm not so curious, because I thought we were out of water, and is Crystal Clear gonna allow them to drill? What's going on with, I mean, can anybody just drill into the aquifer and take water out? I thought that the Texas Sid Miller said, "We don't have any water."
You ask, well, what's the purpose of it? I think that probably is it, once they are created, then they can go to Crystal Clear and say, "I want water in this subdivision."
I believe they're actually a taxing entity.
Because, yes, they are, they're a taxing entity, and, but they get the, they get a different response. If, if I go as an individual to Crystal Clear and say, "I want a tap in the earlining," then they'll, they'll tell you, "No, we don't have enough water for new people like Loopy, like Loopy did over here." And when she asked them for service, they said, "No, we got, there's too much, we don't have enough water for a new customer." And yet, at the same time, they go to the MUD right over here at Staples, and the MUD goes to them and says, "Yeah, but I'm gonna have 200 people." And they say, "Well, that's fine, then, 'cause I'll invest all the money you're gonna pay me, I'll invest in a new well and, and bring more water out of Canyon Lake." But it's, it's a way to get in the door with the utilities and do like Crystal Clear does, but they contract with, that's, that's one, that's one advantage, and one reason the developers do it. And, and then they can also sell it and tell people, when they sell lots, "You're a member of a MUD, and so that means you're gonna have utilities and everything else." That may or may not be true, and they may not have it set up, but it allows them to do that.
It was just the, it was just the sheer number of them that caught me a little by surprise. I had never seen them in election results before. I knew of them, and I knew what they did, you know, how they set up one voter to get it through. But I, the sheer number of them was just a surprise to me.
Well, one thing I liked on the ballot was that I did see, and I can't remember the man's name.
Yep. Yeah, Joseph.
Joseph and his.
And Nick Reineger.
Which I don't remember ever, ever having an election where I got to elect a board of directors.
I have.
A proxy.
I mean, if you go to their meeting, and you, or do a proxy, you can, but I've never seen it on a general election in the county.
That's because they're SUD now, not what they, they were.
Right, where they were a WSC, a water supply company, now they're an SUD.
Yeah.
I think we voted for, I think they have, yeah, I think when, what, Mar-
Mar- Marcella?
Marcella, Marcel. Marcel. I believe that was a voting, it's been, it's been, it just doesn't come up that often.
I didn't remember that, because they went SUD four or five years ago.
Yes.
And I haven't seen any.
Oh, I've seen a big difference.
In elections.
Not in elections, I saw a big difference the minute they went SUD, in terms of what they wanted me to pay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And then, so, and part of the MUDs, maybe, I don't know if you've gone north on 3353, they put in all these streets in the, you know, in what I guess used to be a pasture, and they've moved in quite a few trailer homes into there now. So I'm guessing, you know, where are they gonna get water if not a MUD? I don't know.
I think Sam Marcus was drawing out those water lines, because long before the streets were implemented, I saw them dig out the water lines for fire hydrants.
Yeah, I saw was just the streets up here, so I didn't see the water.
So water lines and fire hydrants are already in place?
Yeah, they're right there, on top of Crystal Clear offices, you know, just on the street. And then, one, one last thing, I keep getting pinged by different people with the Big Easy, wanting to strike railway street, and as they said, their parking lot, and I responded to them once again, that at this time, we're not permitting individuals or businesses to strike a public thoroughfare on their own. They said, "We'll pay for it," but at this time, we're not issuing permits for individuals or businesses to strike a public thoroughfare. I think that might have put it to bed, maybe, maybe not, but.
Why do they need it?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it's not, and it's not a parking lot.
Seems kind of a public thoroughfare.
Strange that they have any issues, they have plenty of space to park.
So, I mean, you know, at, at some point, you know, maybe, maybe we're, would be good with people, or they can go out there with their paint can and put, put, strike, but at this point, we're not allowing that, so.
They, they, you again, ask them to address, what is the need? What is the need? What is the rationale, rationale, reasoning? What is their need?
I don't know. I, yeah, I can ask if they, if they commit, they're a construction manager and then another person has contacted me regarding that. But I, I, you know, it's a, I think it would be something of a slippery slope, that someone could go out there with their can of white paint and paint Kingsbury Road, and say, "Oh, I'm making parking spaces right here."
I'd like, I'd like to know what their need is, what they have envisioned here.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
A little map, drawing, sketch, anything.
But I, yeah, at this point, we are not issuing permits for that, for that. Any other announce? We have festival later in the year.
Yeah, no, I have an announcement. First of all, every Sunday is Dirt Church Gang. If you wanna learn natural building, anybody on, over the Facebooks, that is being conducted by Texas Cobb Company in downtown Kingsbury. Habitable Spaces cooks lunch for them every day, so if you're hungry.
Every Sunday.
But you gotta put in a little bit of work, every Sunday. Yes.
Every day, and I'm like, "Well, I'm coming over."
Anyway, it's a great time, it's great people, you get to learn a lot about natural building, it's free for now, they're gonna start offering paid classes, but for now, it's free, so if anybody wants to learn Adobe or Cobb, get down there while you still can. And then the other announcement I have is at Dirt Church, I was talking to a woman who's pretty active in Wimberly, and we were talking about water, and Wimberly has a lot of rainwater going on, and she also said it's super hard to get money from Texas government for rainwater, but Wimberly, they got together and did a bunch of stuff. And she was also talking about how Wimberly originally developed, which is not how we can, which is something Sam brought up a long time ago, they have all these regulations around storefronts, keeping it all looking a certain way, we're not gonna do that, obviously, because we're a liberty city. But evidently, when they planned that whole thing, one of their things that they were talking about is this need to keep the rural, rural, which is kind of back to our idea of the commons, you know, the rural commons. And, and they made a lot of arguments for just keeping land clear of buildings, and, you know, again, they did a lot of regulation around this, but if people are interested, she said she might be able to get some of those guys to come maybe talk to us, you know, so I don't know if you guys are interested.
I am.
On the water catchment.
Water catchment, and also this idea of, of this rural, you know, this idea of putting forth this need for rural, because nobody seems to care about the rural, but like, as, as our fields go away, who's gonna grow the wheat? Who's gonna grow the corn? Who's gonna, I mean, rural is needed, I don't think these developers understand that if you fill fields with houses, we have to then get our food from somewhere else, so.
I'd be interested in what they have to say.
Yeah.
Oh, rainwater and.
Cool, I will see if I can get them to come do this presentation.
All right. Any further announcements?
Um, maybe, well, you know, the fire department sent out this letter, did y'all get this letter from the fire department?
Yes.
About how they're, they're, well, they're looking for money and recruits. So, something to hire.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the Kingsbury Volunteer Fire Department sent out letters to, I guess, everybody.
What was the date on it?
It was, oh gosh.
Okay, then, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the person that did it did a whole lot of research in the addressing, so that they did not overspend for that purpose, all the double addresses people have, and all the family, wait a minute, one letter for the family, not, she did a whole lot, and she did excellent on that letter, in my opinion, but it wasn't very good.
It's great call, and they definitely need volunteers, so. And for people online who might be watching this, if anyone, it's a great way to get trained, you know, if you're looking to be a firefighter, or an EMT, or any, any of those kind of things, you can get free training when you put in some time over there, so, joining.
Any further announcements?
I just, I can maybe talk about this during the development committee thing, but I just wanted to also bring up, since we're on the topic of the fire department, we never did clear during the development meetings on Tuesdays at the fire department, and it might be worth it, just because David, you know, they use this building, this is their building, it's not a more place building, even though we would like it to be, they're just doing this out of the kindness of their hearts. So we might wanna go in and actually ask them if we can use it on Tuesday as well. We have a contract for the Monday.
I thought that was already established, that's why they were having, that's why we, that's why coordinated, that's why the decision was for the Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month.
I thought, I thought something similar.
I don't think, I don't think anybody, did you ask them? Then nobody ever went to a meeting, so I don't think anybody's asked them.
That was my, my impression from, from the body, that that was already established, because I remember coordinating through the clerk to request a date to meet for, for the, for the development committee.
Well, we might just re.
I think we, I don't think anybody ever did anything, and I just wanna make sure that we're not, I mean, because we.
I agree.
We can revisit.
We, we're very grateful to the fire department for being on this.
I totally agree, but I was of the impression that was something that was already established and done.
I don't think anybody ever went to a meeting at the fire department and asked them. We have asked them, we have a contract with them for the Mondays. Not that it's a big deal, I just wanna make sure we nip it in the bud before it becomes a big deal.
Sure, yeah, sure.
And make sure that we can.
Absolutely.
Because if David gets angry, then.
Well, I don't think he would get angry about it, but we do need to make sure we formally.
They might feel taken advantage of, because it was a great turnout, and, you know, but then things were blocked, and we just have to be careful.
Yeah, and that was something that I was unaware of as far as this housekeeping and regarding those two parking spaces, even as a, even attending, without even, even giving volunteer time to anything. So that was new, and that was very helpful information moving forward.
I didn't know that either, about those two parking spots, so.
And, and again, again, I was of the impression that that was already resolved regarding the second Tuesday of the month, that that was something that was, because when we asked if a day we could meet, and that was the best coordinated date of the meeting of the committee.
Did you ever, I never went to a meeting.
I didn't go to any meetings, but I remember the day of the week being a discussion, a point of discussion, because.
And there was a request made.
We'll revisit it and make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna make sure nobody gets, you know, further.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
I think, I think the commission just made that decision.
I think we did.
Yes, we will, but we didn't ask.
We did not ask.
We simply didn't ask the fire department.
Yeah, we'll revisit it and make sure.
And that's why she's saying that now it's come up. So I think, I think we just need to go ask, and it'll be fine. And that's all the more reason to hurry up, get our new city hall.
Yes, yes. I just, you know, because it's getting popular, I think that maybe like when it was like five people meeting here, and we could be moved to the office or moved somewhere else, it's not a huge deal, but if there's like 20 people in here, and then they have something, that becomes a big deal, so.
They notice, they notice.
Yeah.
The Sunday Church Cobb and Adobe, I had people asking me, so it is open to the public?
It is, you have to, they're.
And they're asking what it is gonna be, and then will that area be open to the public?
Yes, actually, okay, I respect your point, so, it's not my thing, it's Texas Cobb Company, but they do like getting RSVPs, they know how many people are gonna be there, so go on Instagram, go to Tech, Texas Cobb Company, Texas Cobb Co., I think it's one word, Texas Cobb, C-O-B-C-O, so not two Bs. And then you just have to RSVP and let them know you're gonna be there, and it's totally free, and it's from 9 to 2. You will make Adobe bricks, he's gonna teach you his great special recipe for, he does these Adobe bricks that are more resilient to the rain and weather, with a little bit of lime in it, so he'll teach us his recipe, and, yeah.
Okay, other questions on that, that the person asked me about was, what's with the teepee and the little building that looks like a jail, and that's.
The little building's a bathroom, it's an outhouse.
It looks like, it looks like a jail, it's got steel bars, and it's a size, it's like, okay, whoever bathed today.
It doesn't have bars, I mean, well, okay, it does have decorative bars.
I'm just saying with.
It's the jail bathroom.
Yeah.
It's like the fanciest bathroom you could ever possibly imagine.
Well, but doesn't have.
Doesn't have, that doesn't have flushing water.
Yeah.
Compost toilet.
Right.
It's a very beautiful building for a bathroom.
Yeah.
The teepee, I think, is just there so they can hold classes or whatever, if they wanna get out of it.
Well, they told me they just wanted to use the teepee as like a hangout space, but they're, they're gonna brick in that, that metal roof that's there, and it's gonna have like classroom space and studio space, and, and I think they're gonna do some sort of like housing space for like visiting artists that are working with them on things. That's most of what I know about that.
I said, somebody was asking me, and I can't really talk, can I talk to Simon every now and then, but.
Yeah, somebody told me that they saw all kinds of cameras there, and I was like, "Oh, that was me." I'm videoing.
Sorry to digress so much, because we do have an agenda, but.
People are curious.
Well, I wanted to circle back to the initial regarding the volunteer fire department letter that went out, what was, what was the, what did you want to?
Well, I mean, just letting the public, you know, more awareness that they're looking for donations and recruits, and they have a lot of expenses listed on this letter. Is there more you wanna add?
No, I just, I didn't, I did, I just remember the subject jumped to another subject, and so I did, I wanted to circle back to make sure I understood, or that, because I felt like I missed it, and I did.
Would you like to copy the letter?
I had my, I had my packet. I was just wanting to circle back to get a circle closure on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Because I didn't, on that cop.
Item number two, public comments, any, any items to bring up?
I would like to, I'm questioning, I would like to follow up regarding the Guadalupe County Commissioner request regarding the waste station proposal that was submitted back in June. What, whatever happened with that, that was there any kind of proposal that was submitted, or what was the closing result of the waste station?
All right.
Because you remember in June, I was in attendance, and then they had asked, they had a lot of questions about how, how that was gonna work, liability, and things like that.
Right. And it was put that there are certain people that were in the county that were going to be against it, and they were people that were gonna have to go through. And certainly, things like insurance was one of the many items that were on the list of concerns.
Yeah, the county commissioners have.
Yeah, it wasn't just the county commissioners, but yeah. Yeah. So it's essentially stalled out, that's where I was requesting the information regarding all the work that had been done, getting information from our other, our potential companies that would, that do waste, you know, management, so.
It seemed like we weren't able, able to get recycling without paying quite a bit, and then.
Well, that's where I was asking for, for that information. But yeah, I, it got put very bluntly, that there was a, a person that was against using that particular property. That doesn't mean that we can't push it through, but I wanted more information.
It means it's gonna be a lot more work.
So that's gonna be, that may not be worth the amount of work necessary to, and so then.
Well, I mean.
I think it would be worth it, but it's like, who's gonna do the work, and who's gonna, and then it's gonna be money.
Yeah, that's exactly what the county's asking, you know, that's what I'm like, it's not as much like, where are we going? What's, what's the, what's the movement, or the, or the end result for, for that, that project, for that task? That's all I'm asking, just an update.
The county's move on that, it's only a public perspective, hey, twice a year, what they said once a year, but they then went to quarterly, I believe, is what they're doing now, has the city of Seguin a one-waste day, bring it to us on I-10.
Yeah, I've seen those.
Next to downtown Seguin, it's just to county.
Yeah. Any further public comments or discussion? All right, item number three, review of public documents, is this area residents needing with ETJ, and section of the paperwork? I did have a question from someone, actually, today, that called, they had emailed, asking about how far the city limits went on each side of I-10, east of 1104. I believe it's 150, and that's what he was seeing.
Oh, we go on the other side of I-10?
Yeah.
Yes.
Down, we go down 1104 to Baker Road, and, and then down I-10 on each side, except when it comes to the waste station. And we kinda go down and then go back out.
Yeah, and it goes 1104 to Baker, and that's where it stops, and then it goes, goes west along the parallel.
Someone asking about, about that today, and about how that was concerned about being in the city limits because of property taxes. I explained that we do not have that, we don't want to have that, we take very concerted efforts to make sure that we don't have property taxes here in the city of Kingsbury.
Thank you.
And I did file some ETJ papers a couple of weeks ago, one some for, some on 50, some for, right down here on, on 10, up against the EDA, one of the EDA properties. Up, up against the uh, EDA, one of the EDA properties. But it's not in the EDA, it's in the ETJ.
These are all released from ETJ.
Released from ETJ, released from Seguin ETJ.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Item number four, old business consent agenda item approval of October 21st, 2024 regular commission meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes approved. Any need to have the minutes moved to the regular agenda for any discussion?
Not here.
All right. Stay. Um, item number five, discussing consider special event application for road closure for Christmas market Saturday, December 7.
I have this form from Robin Cresta. I guess I'll just read it aloud. Robin, uh, she, the event name is Kingsbury Christmas Markets. Um, the location is Kingsbury Hall. Uh, description of event, Christmas market. This is a vendor market for local vendors and small businesses. Uh, it is December 7th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Wondering if 8:00 AM is like load in and because.
It's early, yeah.
It starts at 10:00 AM, so that must be load in time. Um, and expected attendance, 10 plus vendors and public coming through. Traffic control parking plan, parking will be in front of Country Store Bar slash, Country Store slash Bar slash Guadalupe County Workshop.
I think they mean the county, the county yard.
Yeah, I figured that's what she was talking about.
Man, she's done better than other people as far as submission of what we're actually expecting. And it's to keep children from being run over, basically.
Yeah. Security plan, 911 and self, emergen, emergency medical plan, 911, waste management plan, porta potty for vendors only around building and or um, insurance provider NA. It says and uh, Christine's signed this, some care of Robin Cresta.
She probably turned it in, didn't she?
She turned it in at the Country Store. I, I ran by the Country Store like right before this meeting and was like, do you have that form? And she was like, no. And I was like, bah! And then she was like, I can fill it out. And then, and then as I was running back over here, Tyler sent me a picture of the form that was on a board or something. So anyway, she did it. This is basically me copying what was on that picture into your.
Yeah, I, I believe they were, they, they had requested use of Kingsbury Hall. But given the number of vendors that may want to set up for that, they may spill out into the street and if the weather's great, they may just set up in the street anyway. Um, so that's hence the, the road closure.
Okay, cool.
So yeah, you, it says Kingsbury Hall, which wouldn't necessitate a street closure. However, if they have enough vendors that would then spill out into the street, yeah, they may, they may, it would be safer for the people to have a, a road closure. So. Um, I'm guessing, it, I don't believe it, does, I didn't hear you mention exactly where the closure would go from to, from to.
I mean, honestly, there's no mention of road closure on this piece of paper.
Yeah, yeah.
We need.
Probably do. Because we're talking a partial block, I believe.
Yes.
So it would not be from like stop sign to stop sign, from corner to corner. I believe it's just.
A related question, it says the bar, are they talking about the Big Easy?
I believe probably up to.
Up to, because I was, I don't think Big Easy would be thrilled to have it.
Right, yeah.
Well, I mean, the Country Store doesn't like their right in front of the store block.
No, that's the second business owner to ask.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm guessing it would probably be up to, you know, up to the store and up to there. I mean, we can say that our approval is dependent on the road closure being from, from.
This building to that building and specify the building.
Basically in front of 668 Railway, which is the three buildings there in the middle.
Right, that's what she's basically described.
Okay.
It's not, I don't mean it's on her application. And you are one of the merchants, but I still would be more comfortable.
The other side of Big Easy.
On that street where advised.
Inside of Big Easy, inside of Kingsbury.
Okay, the way she really said it was even less than that.
So yeah, that is something we can do is, is uh.
Three buildings, yes.
Given, given that we approved it, it's not by.
What they're calling it now.
Business owners.
The business owners.
On the street.
That there will be, it's, it's a, it's a street closure, but it's a partial, partial street closure.
But still, you know.
Just asking for no true traffic, basically.
Into this bottom section.
Yeah, I think it would be good to make a note, yeah.
And I would like to add it to our permit application, really.
Yeah, yeah.
Permanently the.
Like a description of the road closure.
Where is the other, beginning and ending of road closures? And uh, the fact that the merchants or business owners on that street have been advised of the, the plan to close the road and to plan to have the event and to make sure, you know, that it's acceptable.
You're not showing them access to their business.
Yeah, I don't wanna, no, I don't want to. Hey, however, if they're willing to donate that access and say, that's fine if they park, that's, that's fine. But I'd like their input at least, you know. And if there's an issue, we have plenty of time to try to work something out.
Yeah, there's typically more business during something like that, bringing people in.
It gives the other businesses.
I mean, it certainly can, can impact it negatively if things aren't, you know, handled right, but, but yeah. Okay.
But if they feel like they have some amount of input, that's a good thing.
Are you, you're saying less of the street than just inside of those two businesses?
Not from corner to corner.
Right, but if they're leaving the Big Easy open and the.
Big Easy and the store, then basically it's in front of 668 Railway, which is the three buildings there in the middle.
The green to the.
Yeah, and potentially the, the antiques store next door and then the empty lot on that side could all be part of the closure. I mean, we don't know exactly. I don't think they would need all of that. But uh, potentially that could be part of the closure.
Okay.
Because those areas, those three buildings, the antiques and the empty lot currently are not part of a day-to-day business.
Okay.
Okay, so Big Easy, Country Store, either side is part of a day-to-day business. So it would impact them negatively if we were to block off that. The other ones are not part of a day-to-day business. So block in front of that, I think would be acceptable for this.
Okay.
Well said, even though we heard the request was to use parking in front of those businesses, which is first come, first served, Big Easy or the people that are gonna come to you because they're over here at this.
And, you know, given, you know, depending on weather and everything, it may be all inside the house. So.
But still, you have so much cross industry and traffic.
And, and, and speaking of um, at this, you know, this means that I will, uh, it, given that we approve it, I would call the county, road and bridge and ask for barricades to be delivered. I think that we have access to government surplus property. I think it would be in our interest to see what, you know.
Get our own barricades?
A number, I mean, it's like eight barricades or something is if you're being.
How's the road there?
I mean, I can, I can, I can hold on to them.
Because the barricades kind of are not that great ones.
Yeah, and it's uh, it. There, there's been at least one time where I was, I was like, oh my gosh, I, I almost forgot, you know, uh, to call them up and ask for that to be delivered. So um, some, you know, barricades and sandbags would probably, sandbags are not available on government surplus, but um, I can check. We have access to, believe, two of those.
There's one in San Antonio.
There's one in San Antonio, I think the other one's in Florida.
The aerodrome calls it a candy store.
The candy store, yeah. So we can, I'll, I'll, I'll double check and, on that and see. There's all kinds of stuff available on there, anything from a pencil tray to, you know, bulldozer stuff.
I saw a helicopter the other day.
Yeah, I was.
I saw that one too. I was thinking about it.
So I'll, I'll double check on that and, and come back with a, what that would, what that would cost and we can see, you know.
People go around there.
No, no, I said, it's one of.
Certainly would be easier to keep them down.
Here we go.
Do we need to vote on that to?
Yeah, we need to, okay, I just wanted to bring up the, the potential of getting our own barricades for that.
Yes, I think it's a great idea.
Yes.
Define closure area.
I move that, I make a motion that we approve this uh, Christmas market road closure.
Oh, I want a minute, subject to defined road closure limits. Ten hours, contact business owners and five dollars a week.
Wow!
All right, strike that last one, strike that last one.
Wow!
So the hours, defined road clo, defined limits of road closure.
And hours?
And hours. And, and notify owners.
And notify owners, yeah.
Okay.
The hours, we don't need to post in advance. We didn't post in advance, notice on something. Like 24 hours, 48 hours, assign, post that the road will be closed.
For Fall Harvest, they used to give us, remember they made us sign one year?
Yeah, and they would, uh, if I requested it. I, I typically have been requesting only just the barricades.
Well, if it's promoted well enough, everyone will know anyway.
Yeah.
But yeah, the, the road closure limits and contacting the business owners. And is it really ending at 4:00 PM? That's what they said?
That's what the fire says.
That's what went up there last, last time.
Well, it's, it's getting dark.
It's a different, it's a different market.
Okay.
And um, they're not doing it at night like the ones.
Yeah, right. It's a daytime.
All right.
It's the same day as the.
That's the only two amendments I would add to that.
As the.
Motion.
Christmas party for the fire department, same day. So it's a busy day.
Busy day.
All right, so the motion has been made and seconded with.
Amendments.
Amendments. Uh, any further discussion on this?
See if the secretary has it right.
About the limits, the orders, the orders, limits, hours.
Do you have, do you have all the information you need?
Yes, I believe so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, surely I'll sign this, I mentioned.
Yeah. All right, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, that motion carries. All right, item number six, discuss and consider Fall Harvest Festival recap.
Fall Harvest Festival recap. Um, well, I made a little budget, uh, just to talk about what came in. It was a smaller one than uh, most and I think that had to do with the election. Maybe um, people were just nervous about going out because we really, uh, we didn't have as many vendors and we didn't have as many people as we have in past years, which was fine by me because the kids all had a blast.
It definitely seemed very busy.
I thought that the art, our area was just wild. I mean, it was just so fun, man. The kids were just going crazy in there. It's such a delight. Um, and it was busy. I think the, I think the vendors made money. Um, but there were less vendors than in past years, so we didn't make as much on the vendors. Um, I do think that if we streamlined Fall Harvest, we could probably make more money out of it. But uh, in cash from the Country Store, we took in 210 for the vendors and then Reg Fox 525. Reg Fox charges us to use their site 3990, so almost $40 out of what we took in there. Um, and uh, and then Kingsbury donated money for the porta potties. So I have a little rundown of porta potties were 755. Uh, printing the mailers and mailing it was 38638. Uh, mailing it was 24218. Um, I have a check here for the Kingsbury store, for the musicians, because you guys paid the musicians in cash. And I just wanted, I left a blank because I wanted to make sure Kingsbury have store.
Just because musicians splitting it up.
Yeah, I think that was wise. It's such a pain in the butt to always have to do checks. Um, so you know, out of that, we paid our musicians, uh, Jessica to photograph it. So we have some documentation for next year, which is gonna make my life a lot easier or whoever's doing the publicity. And um, yeah, so I have this and this for somebody's files, maybe yours. This is.
You know, I've, I've been thinking of certain documents, like a check report and stuff, that probably we could put up as documents on the schedules and agendas.
Yes, so this can be published. I should have printed that bunch, but I was kind of low on ink, so. I don't worry if anyone wants to look at it. Um, but I think that, so, so in other words, what we took in did not pay for the expenses of the festival. We have to rely on Kingsbury's money. But I know that now that we have a ton of festivals in Kingsbury, we're gonna have to shell out money for other festivals and Fall Harvest can't capitalize on all the money that's budgeted for festivals. So I think next year, I'm gonna talk to the people in Luling and we're gonna try to see how we can get Fall Harvest to produce more money so that we don't have to lean on the money that's budgeted for festivals as much from Kingsbury. Because there's the Halloween, now there's two Halloween things a year and uh, we have the Christmas market and other things that also might need money for porta potties and whatnot. So um, I think it's kind of unfair for Fall Harvest to eat it all up. But we did this year, so sorry about that game.
The Halloween, there were some people, like the Jeep Club, that could make it only on the Saturday and then, but Halloween fell on Wednesday and we didn't want to do one or the other. So let's, let's do both. And then of course, the Baptist church had theirs and so it worked out great for. Gosh, as a rural kid, you know.
Yeah, if we go down, yeah, if we go down as the coolest place for children to live in rural Texas, I am good with that. I'm very good with that. So um, this is also the folder that Tyler had and I thought maybe we could just keep it in the city.
Sure.
Um, just, it has all the vendors and, you know, so next year, like, I don't think you need these, but. Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's all I got unless people have questions about Fall Harvest or. Those were just what the, these were in, so they, I, I had them in there, but those were my. And this is for you, for the musicians.
Um, yeah, and the music was great and the musicians got probably more in tips.
Oh, excellent, cool.
Than, than straight pay, which was awesome, you know? It really made it worth their while because it was kind of a short notice and, and they really enjoyed it. And I, and I loved the people on the porch.
They were great. It was a blast.
Good.
And he actually wanted me to get Vlad's number, which I don't know.
Yeah, I can get that tonight.
Yeah, maybe we'll, I'll get that off you. Um, because he wants to do some kind of singer-songwriter collaboration.
It was nice having live music, basically throughout the festival, having live music.
Uh, Ethan, Ethan, uh.
Was he the guy or the little?
The big guy.
Uh huh.
Yeah, Ethan, uh, Ford, Ethan Ford, yes. Ah, and another bit of exciting news, we were, Jessica and I were talking about um, the lack of MC and how nice it would be to MC the whole event and guess what? Guess who accidentally voluntold herself to be the MC of next year's Fall Harvest? Yes.
And me.
If someone better comes along, I will gladly give it away.
I've MC'd, I've MC'd, but I'm so busy running around. It's, I'm never the best MC and um, so.
It's rough to do when you don't have a lot planned out.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm excited for next year.
Who shut up?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, if I take this MC thing, I will make sure I have a script for myself when I.
Yeah, we want unscripted.
I'm expecting clear, concise MC, but I want a show. I want a show.
Oh, oh, I have one more, one more thing about the Fall Harvest. Um, also evidently Shay Harworth was upset because when he saw some photos of the event, uh, he saw a bunch of cars in the field and they weren't actually in the area where his septic is. They were all in the front, but it looked as if there were cars in the back. We were very careful to keep cars out of the back and, but, but you know, I think in the future, I would li, like to just not use that field because he got upset. We had to sit there and explain to him, no, those cars, it's a perspective thing. But I don't want to have, you know, our neighbors and friends upset with us um, over potential cars in there and, you know, that one year, somebody did drive over his septic lines. And so I think it's just better to not use the interactive zone. Shay can do something with it, the bar can do something with it if they want. And that means we'll have to maybe move the haydive somewhere.
There's the.
There's the in-between of the buildings and I think for.
And in the back.
And for fall, uh, habitable spaces, events, we can bring down the. And for fall, uh, habitable spaces events, we can bring down the trading post, we can occupy where the stage was. So, you know, I think we'll tighten it up a little bit, move it out of the field and just, that way everybody be happy. And if the bar wants to do something in the field, they can do something in the field.
Yeah. Yeah, we were, we were very careful when we were scoping it out, making sure that there was no parking.
We got, we got texty all that though, so it's like, well, you know, I mean, I know we controlled.
Some misunderstanding because we did be very careful about making sure that that was.
I know, and, uh, you know, but.
We did not want to repeat of, of damage to them.
I mean, I do think it's, I mean, two years ago, when the hay, hay dive was next to the store in that middle space, I, I thought it was visually better. Like, because it, it does keep things kind of closer together and, you know. And then, um, I also had a, an idea or a thought that, um, it, I do think we need a microphone outside. Um, and maybe, you know, I liked how there was music in the hall and also music outside. I was thinking if we could have some sort of very small stage area under the tree, kind of next to where the beer corral was, you know? That that would be a great central spot for like announcements, for some acoustic music, for.
For the musical chairs.
Musical chairs, yeah, a nice little spot where, and that gives the, the beer corral something to look at.
Yeah.
You know, I feel, feel like that was something about two years ago, is that if you were in the beer corral, you were watching the stage. But if the main stage is inside, still something.
Going on.
Going on right there.
Yeah.
I agree.
I like it. Bigger and better than ever.
All right, item numbers, uh, uh, circling back, here's a check report, uh, to announcements. Uh, nothing, we got the quarterly franchise fees from GVC and moved on it. And then GVC has been also, in addition, an extra check. There's no explanation about this extra check. Um, and I did deposit it, but it's showing as pending, uh, because I probably did it this weekend, I thought it, did it like Friday or something. But it's like twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Is it in, is it in the total?
No, it's not in the total, it's twenty-one, but.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's, GVC does theirs and then they've been sending this extra check a little separate. So, um, the only other things, uh, uh, here are Bernard Donegan, that was the bonds for the need. And that was a real snafu, uh, because I had gotten a call, I had sent the, uh, payment for the bonds. Then, oh, then I got a call and I said, no, I sent that. I sent that a while back. And then, uh, we got a letter under the door that showed that it had gone to like New Brook Falls and then come back. But they've closed their thing in New Brook Falls, although I did put it to their address in secret. So, um, and so a lot of back and forth and back and forth, we, so we finally got that ironed out. So, uh, that was quite the interesting, uh, work there. Uh, uh, membership to TML, uh, came out of this, some Texas file that was me looking up deeds and, uh, needs and balance type information. Uh, habitable spaces, five-star title, that was the, for the contract. Um, and, uh, and then, uh, a regular general sales and use tax and also, um, the mixed beverage, there you go. Mixed beverage, uh, sales receipts.
Cool.
Okay. Any questions on that? So I try to make it all very self-explanatory. And this is another thing to, like, we could probably upload it to documents. We have like a little column there for documents, so probably these are kinds of things that we need to kind of start uploading there, but.
On that agendas page, you're saying?
Mm-hmm. There's a, there's a column there that we put documents. Okay. So, all right, uh, item number eight, discuss and consider, uh, uh, number seven, excuse me, item number seven, discuss and consider Kingsbury Development Committee Report.
Thank you, hello. Um, first, before I get started, just want to circle back to that, um, that it will be the commission that will, that will, the commissioners, that will confirm with the fire department?
Yes.
About the meetings, okay.
Yes.
Will you send them?
And then you'll email with us?
Either.
And you'll let us know?
Yes.
Okay, cool, great, thank you.
Yep.
Make sure I got that.
I'm sure it's gonna be fine, I just wanted.
Yeah, no.
Before we.
And I want to make sure I, I, that it, that it gets taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you, thank you for that, okay. Um, so. Kingsbury Development Committee, as you know, um, we are actively recruiting, um, additional residents, interested community residents to participate in the committee and to, to, in support of the city commission, such as the Fall Harvest. Um, I think that would be a great time, this is a great time now to start planning for next year. And I think the committee would be your great asset for, for planning, diagramming, um, and as a, as part of, as it being included as part of its, um, activity for their calendar activity already on the plan and start making dates and timelines of when we need to get things moving. How do we, who do we need to contact, to work with, to get, you know, established, you know, make sure that the marketing flyers are, are, are taken care of. And to alleviate, again, the role of that volunteer is to, is to support of, uh, of, of, of the commissioners or the paid employees or in this case, volunteer, volunteer folks, you know, we're trying to make something really happen. So, anyway, I think, um, that's partly the purpose of the committee. That being said, uh, so we're looking for, um, uh, folks to lend a hand to the committee that are passionate individuals that want to volunteer their time and talents for a variety of, of, of rewarding opportunities, such as like an event coordinator. Uh, this individual could really help organize and execute, um, community events that the commission has already identified and has approved, like the Fall Harvest. Um, and work in tandem with the city clerk and others to make that, make that happen. Um, and to give us guidance of what we need to do in order to, to make it the way it's envisioned. Um, same, uh, we've got another opportunity, uh, with the community outreach, which is really their focus would be to spearhead awareness and marketing and recruiting new volunteers. Um, administrative support to assist, um, office tasks and paperwork and really assist and work in tandem with the city, with city clerk to alleviate some of those, um, committee roles and responsibilities that the committee can, can then take on on its, on itself. Um, and to work in tandem with the city clerk as far as, um, to ensuring that any publication that, that is, or marketing material that is needed for, to the support of any activity is reviewed by the commission and approved before any publication is, is sent out, as, as an example for, for administrative support. Uh, same with volunteer coordinators, someone that can help manage, uh, make sure that we get both the hybrid approach for the short-term and long-term, um, volunteers have exciting and new things and, and fun things that, that they're contributing to, uh, as part of their, their volunteer finance. So definitely give us a call, hit us up, we're looking, uh, so those are our, kind of our.
This week.
The committee, myself and, and, and the elected officials that are on the committee.
Okay.
That's, that's the committee. We're looking, we're trying to recruit for, have more community involvement and participation, uh, both of residents and folks that consider themselves part of the, part of the Kingsbury community. So please, uh, definitely reach out to us and attend, like you, uh, just a friendly reminder, uh, the committee meeting, after some of the committee meeting, uh, on, uh, second Tuesday every month. We do have a little hiccup in that schedule, we'll get a definite confirmation that that will continue. But please stand by, uh, keep up with us for those out there in, uh, online world, um, about any future potential date, uh, should that, should that change. We also had, uh, during last Tuesday, we had the guest speaker presentation, Kingsbury Baptist Church. So many thanks to Pastor Cassell Senior. Um, uh, those that, that I had emails for, I did send a thank you note to, uh, Kingsbury Baptist Church for their, their, their presentation and, and information regarding their community clothing closet, as well as the, uh, food pantry and how, uh, the community can get involved, their hour operation and things that they're looking for. And also see about how this is a collaboration that can be, that the committee, that the committee can build a bridge in conjunction with Kingsbury Baptist Church. As Mr. Cassell also eloquently put, to build the bridge. Um, and, and we, it was fun to learn about the Samaritan purse shoebox, so that would be fun to learn more about. Um, so I'm gonna try to get a little more information and maybe that might be something that, uh, the, 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 the community as a whole would like to get more involved in or participate in. With that being said, I also did, um, for those that are in attendance, we did provide a little bit of a survey and a re- uh, evaluation of the, of, of other presentation. The overall was very excellent, very good. Um, folks are very excited about having, um, other, other professionals or other organizations, small organizations or local businesses or other professionals come and, and share their expertise and knowledge and, uh, experiences and, and things that are of interest to the community. And so, uh, that was very helpful, uh, your comments that were received, so those will be taken, uh, in and worked out to be, to be worked out for the rest of the year for our guest speaker, uh, outreach effort. Again, something that, uh, an outreach, uh, volunteer that's kind of focused on that could really help lead up, that we could really use the help and the commission could use that. Coming up, uh, as far as, um, announcements, uh, November is Native American Heritage Month. Um, and in some recognizing the invaluable contributions of native peoples, um, on the, in the notes and in the Kingsbury message board, I sent information, a little link regarding that for anyone who has interest. Also, uh, the committee presents Waddleby County Master Gardeners, December tenth, which is gonna be next Tuesday, uh, the, uh, the next second Tuesday in the month. Um, I am gonna have to make sure that we can get that date confirmed with the volunteer fire department before, uh, before reaching back out to our guest speaker to, uh, notify of any changes in, in those logistics. Also, um, something that Commissioner Heimann brought up was the fact that, uh, Texas is out of water. And so there is, uh, it also provided a opinion piece by the Sid Miller's office, Texas Department of Agriculture, um, about water for Texans, uh, by Texans and a pact to the self-reliance, so something that you might be interested in. And is a little bit of a precursor to our upcoming, um, presenter for rainwater collecting and harvesting. Subject to any comments, questions, or concerns, that's all that I have.
How was the, how was the turnout, I'm sorry, I missed that meeting, how was the turnout?
It was amazing.
We, we had just shy of twenty participants.
Great.
I'd like to say something, I'm super impressed by the pivot. Uh, I know we kind of got stuck trying to write the strategic plan, but, you know, we, I guess, you know, being a liberty city, it's difficult to write a strategic plan. Uh, but I love the pivot towards just reaching out to the community and getting people involved each other, it's great. Um, and I loved the turnout, it was amazing to see all of those folks come in and, and join and listen to each other. So great work, Elena, it was fantastic. Um, also, just wondering if, uh, those roles that you need, maybe if we could put an ad on the website or something.
That would be, I mean, that would be, that would be great. Uh, obviously, there needs to be some sort of approval process with, with the commission. I'm not, I'm not prepared to present those as a final, final product, I would say. It was just, at this point, it's, it's, it's trying to give the context of, and a focus and a purpose. Um, and again, whether, whether a person can contribute two hours a week, um, to, to thirty minutes in a week, uh, or thirty minutes in a month, it's, it's still priceless because it's something that, that the city commission is gonna, is dependent upon. Because we are a liberty city and we are volunteer org- based, and it's about each of us stepping up, managing our own personal lives, be able to come out and be able to have a, a set commitment time to, to make that commitment to the city. And that's what, that's what we've all done here, um, myself included, even though I've, uh, I was never asked to. I saw I needed and I'm trying to fill the need. So thank you.
That's great.
All right, I didn't.
Say thank you.
Item number eight, discuss and consider community development block grant program application update.
Um, there's not a lot to it, um, I did, um, I checked in with the woman who's handling our, our application.
Did she, yes, that might have been someone that called on the Kingsbury number and I gave them. Last one.
Uh, well, I talked to two, two women at, at Grant Works last week. Uh, one was Jessica, who is working on our application. She said that the phase one application is done, but pending approval in some of their networks or wherever their people are checking it out. Uh, and then I, um, I got a call from Lauren something, this other woman there who was kind of a pre-application phase person, and she was just checking in about that other grant that requires us to have a zoning ordinance and, uh, and we don't. And so she was like, I just wanted to make sure, or I just wanted to check, are y'all doing that right now? And I was like, no. Um, but she said that the, the proposal that they sent is good for a few years or something. So if we do want to pick up that grant again in a year or two, um, we already have their stuff. So that's really all for now on that stuff, but. Let's move it along, right?
I'd love to be included when they do, I mean, I think we should, we all probably want to be included, obviously, but, um, definitely, we want to keep track of that second part and make sure they're not gonna write anything in that, you know, we don't need. But I know we'll, we'll all be on top of that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the second part won't even come unless the first part is approved, so. Okay.
Cool.
Item number nine, discuss and consider possible real estate acquisition. This is under Frank's name.
Yes, because I kind of just got it rolling a little bit, but everybody else has been doing their jobs. So you have a survey completed?
Yes, I, I did receive a, a survey. I only, I have the whole survey for, for, um, what's it called, like plot one and plot two. I just printed out the plat at this point. It did survey down to point, uh, zero, uh, point four-four acres instead of point five. It was point three there for a while, um, but it came out to, and I think, uh, Dennis, you had seen at one point somewhere, it was point three-six.
I never heard of point three-six.
Sometime in the back, oh, no, I guess that was sometime, I guess I heard that.
Point four-nine, point four-three-two, point.
So, yeah, at this point, and I just printed out the map, I will send out the whole survey. Um, but at this point, it's just the map kind of shows you what we're looking at, the zero-point-four-four acres. Um, I did receive, uh, an email and I'm trying to sneeze.
Well, while you're sneezing.
Yes.
I was just curious if we know, if we've heard anything from the county about whether they'll accept that point four-four because I know that they only subdivided half acre.
Well, yeah, we have a thing on subdivision here.
Okay.
Um, so, yes, we're moving, oh, so I did receive an email regarding a document for a docu-sign, but then there were some changes and I have not received another docu-sign.
Oh, okay. Well, what I've, what I've received, and I was gonna bring it up and a- uh, ask you, is I just got an email from a lady at the title company asking, uh, if we have the survey completed yet.
Yeah, just.
And so we need to, uh, send that to her. Uh, they've also sent to me a, uh, and I'm gonna forward it to all of you, uh, an email with the title commitment, uh, which, uh, describes, but it's basically the precursor to the title policy that would be issued when we purchase it. Uh, but anyway, the, the main thing is they're waiting on that survey.
Okay.
To go forward.
So I'll send that out tonight?
Yeah, and I think, what is, uh, today is the eighteenth.
Yes.
Uh, and I think our contract says it's gonna close by December first. So that's a, a hard date and I don't, getting them the survey this late, uh, they may be ready to go and so we're ready to close. But we might need to amend that, well, first of all, we need to. Well, first of all, we need to amend the contract because the contract says we are buying .49 acres.
Right.
And so we now need to just say, the contract is amended to be .4 whatever you.
44.
Now, does that, have you seen that, Dennis?
I haven't seen the survey.
Does that leave, that leaves his 1, 1.0?
That leaves 1.0. That was the question, and they had to come back and resurvey it in last week.
That was the question the surveyors had because the county had it down as two different things on tax holes and as far as the actual survey, the sale.
Okay.
So it's, it's back to the title companies, one title company to another.
And that's why they had called asking about.
You can keep it as you want.
Thank you.
Because we had, we had let them, they were surveying based upon our information that was 1.5. And so that's when they had contacted me and said it was, actually came out to 1.43 at the time and what did they want to do? And that's when I said, keep the back at 1.0, whatever is left over, survey that out. And comes out to .44 actually, so. So that's basically where the, where the line, and then again, like last week, they had to come out again.
All right, then I'll forward this to the title company, the survey.
Yes, as soon as I have internet, I will, I will forward out the entire survey to, to you and the rest of the commission and to the title. Well, I don't have the email for the title company.
Well, I, I can.
I mean, I can take it out, but.
I'm going to forward you the one, to all of you, the title commitment email. But then there's another email from the assistant closer, that's, closing officer, that just asked for the survey. I, I can send that to you, Shirley, and let you forward to her the survey that you have now have. And that'll bring us up to date with the title company. But I am going to, now that we have the survey and I know exactly what the acreage is or the square footage and the description, I'm going to write up an amendment to the contract to send to the title company after you and Dennis sign it. But it doesn't require, doesn't require any further resolution by the commission to authorize you or to authorize an amendment because we have, you've already, the commission has already resolved that the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract to purchase. And so that, you've already been authorized to sign contracts. So I'm simply going to prepare that amendment, send it to all of you. You sign that amendment and then we get Dennis to sign that amendment saying that it's .44, whatever, whatever this says. And then we're going to send that executed contract. Frank, you can take it back to the title company, just like you did the original contract. So I'll get that done right away and get that to you for signature, Shirley.
Okay.
And then we'll get Dennis to sign it.
Cool.
If, if there, if the title, and I think I might call the title company and ask them, are you guys still on tap for December 1? Can you do it now that we've got this survey? Because if they say, well, wait a minute, we need, we need some time to handle the paperwork, then I will also put into that amendment that we agree to, it can be closed up until December 15th because nobody's going to walk out of this contract. But if we go past December 1 and the title company says, but I don't have all the closing documents, I'm not ready to close, then once the pass December 1, we don't have an agreement with, with Dennis. And I think that, but we're all very interested in going forward. If somebody, if you want to, if there's somebody that may be hesitating or looking for a termination, then we would need to make sure that we've amended this contract. And the title company may want it amended to say, give me some more time. But I don't think that's a big deal. We just need to amend it to say the specific acreage, this survey, and, and we can have a little bit of extra time to close.
Okay, you mentioned closing agent, that is within the title company?
Yes.
Okay. That's just. That's a closing.
Yes. That's just the title company.
Title company employee.
Yes.
One day we'll have a home of our own.
No, I have a question because my memory is not that great anymore. All of our discussions, yeah, I remember five dollars. All our discussions regarding this have been in executive session until our last meeting and we returned from executive and went into open. I think maybe the only time we actually said what we're doing here, is that correct? And for those that.
It was like 10 o'clock at night.
Did say, played enough to hear it, or didn't watch the entire length of the video. We are purchasing a building and some acreage in Kingsbury to become city property, city hall.
Community public ground, community center.
One and everything that it can be, storage. We hope to eventually meet some of the requests that people brought to us about how to spend that Quilford grant in terms of rainwater collection, a well, emergency use well, electrical generator, all kinds of emergency off-ramp stuff. And hopefully an offer of our own. Thank you very much to the fire department for letting us use this facility.
Yes.
Yeah, we'd like to be on our own too, if we can.
I'd like that statement.
So, and thank you, Mr. Dennis Keim.
Yes, thank you, Dennis.
For making us an offer that we can afford. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. No, I'd actually like to thank Dennis specifically because you've seen us develop, you've watched us talk about these ideas, you've sat through all of these hours and hours where we're like, what is a liberty city? How do we best serve our people? How do we keep taxes low? And struggling through how to form a city commission, how to be city commissioners. So I take it as your belief in Kingsbury that you have done this for us and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I know you don't want a lot of public credit and everything, but inside that building, inside a closet, there's going to be a little panel that's loose. And if you sit on that panel inside, there's going to be a brass plaque with your name on it.
Just give me enough of, you know, etching the wood. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we have some items to, to take care of. I'll take care of them tomorrow and then we'll get, get to the next step.
Yep.
All right, item number 10, discuss and consider interlocal agreement on subdivision regulation update. This is me. And I've poured through the 76 page.
You're a brave woman, Charlie.
Well, it, yeah.
But now we know that you can do it, so that's better. Next boring document.
One of the county subdivision regulations, the items that I certainly put focus on was section nine, plat requirements. Although in the plat requirements, unless it's totally escaping me, I don't have, it has minimum lot size regarding public sewage facilities, but there's, you know, certainly questions there that I have. The thing that, of the frequently asked questions for the property and subdivision and planning is, what is a plat slash subdivision? Which is a question that has come up, what's a plat? They certainly advise you to request a pre-develop meeting. And so I'm going to see about getting that, just getting, you know, you can pour over these documents and they're, you know, they're, there's, well, the information is there, but it may not, it's not as specific or then answer the questions that you actually have about your particular set of circumstances. So I'm going to make this meeting with the pre-development committee and see, you know, make sure that we have. Right, exactly. So that's, that's a thing for tomorrow also.
Great.
And then, and this is also regarding the interlocal. And I think I have printed out here, oh, this is the original document that we signed because it had like some paper, I think this is why I can't move it from a PDF to a Word document because of the hand signatures in, but this is what we signed on the 20th of March 2017 regarding the interlocal. Now, if we're, if we're looking at our own plating, you know, taking that over as far as subdivision, I have somewhere in my, I think it was the last thing I was printing out, but grabbed it before I could, ran on the door, which is why I forgot my phone. It's essentially adding to interlocal, the interlocal is fairly generic. Essentially, it's adding a section, this is what the city will do because our interlocal with the county, it's all county. There's no responsibilities by the city. So what we're doing is adding this, here's the responsibilities of the city and making sure that both have no responsibility in the ETJ.
What do you mean by no?
Well, no, the city does not have, I'm sorry, I said both. The city doesn't have control within the ETJ of.
Well, we don't want that.
Well, yeah, why do we not want that?
I, it has not been an item that has been in control by a city. So everything on the interlocals is within the city limits. Outside city limits, it falls into the county. So city ETJ is outside the city limits.
If somebody comes and plats, plats the subdivision in our ETJ, but not in the city, then that's going to be up to the county.
If it's partly in the city, it would, we would have some control over it.
No, if it's entirely though.
Yeah.
If it's entirely, we have no say whatsoever.
I don't think that's the case. I'll find out.
Don't we want to have the same control over plating in our ETJ that we do in our city limits?
That would be great.
If possible, yeah.
But we, that is not, it is not within the city limits, so it falls into the county. So as far as.
Where does it say that?
In the interlocal.
Well, but you're talking about amending. We're, and.
Right, I don't believe that any, I'll double check, but I don't believe any city has plating authority in the ETJ, only within the city limits.
Seguin does.
No, it's the county.
The thing that you mentioned about Seguin before.
I thought, I thought that Seguin does have plating authority in their ETJ. They do not leave it up to the county.
I have heard a story or two about something like that, but I have not, from what I understand, and I will verify, I will go through and make sure that I understand, especially when I'm talking with the pre-development committee, our pre-development person, is that what kind of plating authority is available in the ETJ. But from the documents I've seen, yes, plating authority is within the city limits, not within the ETJ. So I think when people have wanted to subdivide, that is county, that is the county coming and identifying here is the plating requirements for this.
And it's how we have the current situation in Staples and down the road and the muds and.
No. But definitely, definitely an additional point to make sure we have all the facts on that. Because the documents I've seen, it is only within the city limits, ETJ is not. But I had, I had some understanding at one time too, that the city of Seguin had some authority within their ETJ regarding plating, but I have not seen that. It's all been within city limits. But I will definitely get some verification on that for sure.
Well, I think, I think we, yes, ma'am, that's, that's good. Because it occurs to me that if we only amend in our agreement with the county to say that we are now going to be responsible for the plating within the city limits, that's a very limited power that you're going to have in effect because it's 150-foot strips.
Right.
And so it's, it's almost like, what's, what's the point of taking on that responsibility? And nothing's going to happen in 150-foot strips.
Right.
So, anyway, I, that's just the reason I think we should consider. And you've indicated that we will reconsider that as to whether or not we do the ETJ. Because it may be that, well, I, I think we just need to look into it.
Yeah. Because I think, I have seen nothing that says about a, a property that is partially within any kind of city limits, that there's any kind of distinction on that it's also within the plating authority if it's partially in there. It's just, if the ETJ is, if it's, if we don't have plating authority outside the city limits. So I know that, like in the, in the city of Staples, in the one property that they have, you know, been dealing with, there, it's only a corner of it that is in the city limits. And that is what has given them the, the right to have some kind of, of chair at the table. So even if there is a partial that at least gives some kind of authority at least to have input on, you know, a piece of property. But I will get definite, I mean, when I'm looking at the documents and I'm saying, I'm seeing that there is no authority in the ETJ, I'm guessing that the information that I had gotten, you know, second, third hand about some people dealing with, with plating, that, that I probably was getting the wrong information or second, third-hand information, you know, at that point. So, but I'll definitely get some clarification.
I mean, if it's a, if it's a case where it might not be traditional and most cities don't do it, but we could do it, you know, take over the ETJ.
Yes, we should.
Yeah.
I'm hard pressed to see a reason if we can affect the ETJ.
Yeah. Okay.
Is your development meeting?
I don't have it. I don't have it scheduled yet.
If you'd like company or?
Absolutely.
I would love to attend that.
Get my hell, Frank.
No.
Be nice, Frank.
No.
No, it's always, it's definitely good. And then we, we think of different questions and we think of different topics to bring up and get some clarification.
You'll bail me out, honey.
Absolutely. If you, I'll have your back if you've got mine.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So that's at least the update on that. And then when we get some more information from this, we'll certainly post that. Item number 11, discuss and consider clerical questions.
Yeah, I just had some things I wanted to mention or talk to you all about. I guess, you know, I had a conversation with Allison recently about the live stream that maybe, and I don't know if y'all even have an opinion about this, but right now, you know, our live stream streams to Facebook, our Facebook page. our live stream streams to Facebook, our Facebook page. You know, Allison is not really a Facebook person and there are other not very Facebook-y people in the community. And so we talked about, you know, what if it streamed to YouTube or something like that instead? And, and I mean, I think that there are pros and cons. Because I do feel like people happen upon the live stream when they're scrolling Facebook. And so that, that does bring in some eyes that way. But I do think YouTube would be a more organized way to look at the videos, you know, and it would be easier to link to the videos. Like, I would like to get on the website links to the meetings with the, with the agendas and stuff like that. I think that would be great. And that would be much easier to do from a YouTube account.
And a YouTube channel is, I've got two or three channels. There, there's no charge.
Right, yeah.
Just as there, we're always looking for, you know, making sure that we have a reasonable cost. And free is definitely what we're going for here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and YouTube is, is pretty awesome.
I mean, if it's live streamed on Facebook, does that create a video that then could be put on YouTube? Or is it too hard to get it from Facebook?
I think that I could probably download from Facebook and then upload to YouTube. You know, when I started thinking about what we could do with video, I immediately started thinking about how bad the internet is here. I could do that at my house, you know, but I could not accomplish that if I tried to do it in this office. And then, you know, that kind of trips me into my, my hatred of our internet connection here. And, you know, I, on last Tuesday, when I came in for the development committee meeting, I had some things I wanted to get printed before the meeting. And the printer was not connected to the internet, which like happens because our internet is crummy here. And then I said something to Bonnie about it and she was like, ah, that always happens to me, you know? And we were, and I was like, I can't keep complaining with you. I have so much to do. And so, you know, I don't know. I never really know how long it's going to take me when I come in here to accomplish various tasks because the internet might screw me. So I, I don't know. I feel like, I don't know how long it's going to be before, you know, hopefully we'll be in the new city hall. I sure hope we don't get DSL at the new city hall.
There's fiber downtown. There's fiber downtown.
I mean, I assume that fiber is available.
We just got fiber at our farm. If we can get it way down there, you guys can get it downtown.
I don't know. Part of me was like, should we, you know, because Bonnie was saying that the, the fire department might consider getting better internet here. It made me wonder if that was something the city might be willing to chip in with them about. But also, I, you know, is it going to be a year by the time that we move into the next city hall? Is it, you know, there, there's a lot of work to do, we all know. So it might be quite a while. So I don't know. I, you know, I just want to have a forum to tell y'all what I'm thinking and how I'm feeling about these things. And also, while I'm talking about all of this, the city laptop, I, I mentioned to y'all a while back that I got that message that, that it wasn't going to be, that Windows 10 was not going to have security updates eventually. And that's like at the end of 2025. I talked to, well, somebody got in touch with me who was watching the live stream when we had that conversation and she's a, she's the daughter of someone who works with the air dryer.
Wants you to go to Win 11, is that?
Well, and that computer is not.
Capable of going to Win 11?
So I think that we're going to hit a moment where we need to get a new city laptop or computer or whatever.
Well, that one is several years old.
Yeah, remember nine years old is the city. When did Nellie buy that? Probably eight years ago?
I wonder if it's our second one or. Yeah, it's, it's, I would not be opposed to, to upgrading our, our equipment.
I mean, again, we have about a year before, before that happens. But what do you think of Frank?
Well, because we can't alleviate your connectivity problems really soon, really soon. Although chipping in to help upgrade the fire departments, I think would be great. I mean, if we're, if they're having problems with the two, then, you know.
I also think it's not that expensive because we just got fiber at the farm. Today they came in installed.
Who's their server?
GBEC is doing the fiber in this area.
No, what do they have here right now?
They might have GBTC, which is terrible. And we used to have GBTC. And you can switch. They're offering a free hookup and it's like 30, $29 a month for the cheapest. And I think the really crazy fast is like 69. So it's really not expensive.
Affordable.
And I think maybe it's just.
Actually, it talks to them, they don't charge anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you have to check and see if that's like an introductory office offer and what the actual megabits per second is.
Yeah, you might be getting a big, there's one that was 100 I saw, but.
I'm the middle one, but I like signed up like way before it was available. Like, please let me know as soon as possible or whatever. So I think they gave some better deals to people that they had to, it doesn't matter.
Well, would you like to shop for a price to have for this facility and then relay the message to Bonnie, whoever else? And then just let, float it through them?
Can vote on that.
And see, and it's, if it was something we can afford on a monthly basis, as long as we're here.
I mean, it might be the same price or cheaper, honestly.
I can be here.
And that might give us an opening number Tuesday, you know, once a month.
Oh, yeah, like, hey, by the way, we're going to pay for your internet and.
We don't want to abuse this, but we do want to use, you know, what we can.
Also, I think it's not going to be that much more expensive because if they're on GBTC, we were on GBTC and it was crazy expensive for crap. I mean, for super, super slow.
1.5.
Yes.
See, I have GBTC at, in downtown, you know, a couple of different connections there. And I'm, I get 15, which is, you know, stream movies without any problem.
Yeah. But the fiber is even faster and it's not that much more expensive.
My, I have relative that has the 1.5, which is, I believe, what y'all had. And because they can only offer that in some places. And so it's, I don't know what they have, I don't know what they have there.
Well, I think GBEC is here now. They came all the way down 1104. So GBEC is the fiber, that's the, that's the passive.
Wants to investigate pricing and availability?
I mean, I can, I can do that. I'm happy to do that.
You know what we need, you know what you need?
Yeah.
And get pricing and.
Yeah.
Availability for this location.
Yay!
And then input from me on my part.
Gladly devote some time for that.
We'll keep you happy. You start shopping for a laptop.
I like the idea of us paying for it while we're here because, I mean, it also smooths things over the fire department, keeps them happy, keeps them, you know, thinking kindly of us rather than we just take over their space.
Well, if we, if we, you know, find out that we can, that, you know, do the work for them and find out that there is, you know, a better option and that, oh, by the way, we'll, we'll kick in.
Yeah. Because they're volunteer too. It just might be that Bonnie doesn't have the time to sit around like figuring it out online and.
And you'll start shopping for a new laptop.
Yeah.
So leverage, leverage the leverage. We'll even.
Don't buy it yet.
Because you don't have to calculate it in.
I mean, Win 10, Win 10 will be around for a long time, but it's just like any other operating system. Eventually your programs, you know, our, our office subscription will no longer work on a Win 10 or there will be some vulnerabilities that will open up on Win 10, you know, that Win 11.
And that was the thing is like security stuff was specifically what they were talking about.
So it's, you know, in these days, it's, it's all about security.
Yeah.
It really is.
And, and on YouTube or Facebook, I would really like to do both until there's no one left on Facebook. We have a pretty good group following us on Facebook.
Well, I, I think that.
Both is great.
So I was looking.
YouTube, yes, I like YouTube.
I was looking into this and I was seeing that there is a way that I could be streaming simultaneously to YouTube and Facebook.
Oh, great.
The thing is, we've got to fix this internet.
That's, yeah. And if you need an additional camera, I don't, whatever is to take, let us know what you need to make it happen.
And right now, we have.
I really like, I really like that.
Minus the, minus the grant money, we have almost 200,000 that we have available to us. So I think the new laptop would be definitely.
For those that don't have the laptop, most of that's going to this house.
Look how happy.
This building.
I'm so happy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Love it.
Yeah, I would definitely say, check into that. Just let us know what you find and I have no problem. I mean, let us know fine, I mean, if you say, yeah, I found this really great one for $2,500, well, I may have a problem with that, but have the money.
You're going to get a laptop for $500.
Oh, you can get a laptop.
Don't let her tell you, no.
For $250 or something, you know? Okay.
I think that as far as cameras, like, I feel like once we move into the new building, it might be really cool to, to have like two cameras on a switcher.
Mounted, yeah.
Yeah, mounted so that, you know. But I, I don't think, I don't want to get into that until we move into the new building.
Right, right, till we know exactly.
Do you have any microphones and, and you can have a director's panel?
Yeah.
Isn't it great having a techy for city clerk?
I know. All right, so, so live streams, definitely. If, if, there's nothing, it, it's just others had mentioned Facebook, so we've definitely tried it out. It works. There may be other things that work better and then maybe work better for more people. Wi-Fi, take a look at that and see. I don't have a problem, I mean, we may have to vote on it or something. I don't have a problem to, to, you know, for Wi-Fi at the fire station. If we can find a, a good alternative to what they have now. And I believe their, I believe their speed right now is something like 15, 15 megas per second. So if, if there's something more available, better.
Like 53.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I have, I have, I have colleagues that have Google, Google fiber at 500. So, yeah, I, I'm not even sure what you would be doing that you would need 500.
70 screens of that.
Yeah.
You can land the shuttle on that.
And then, yes, and then definitely give us some information on the city laptop. And if you want me to help with any of this, just let me know. Okay, cool. Yay, thanks, y'all. Okay. Oh, up, here we are, at adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.